Welcome back to our Monday meeting, our morning meeting of July 7th. Next up on our agenda is the 10 o'clock. I'll sign an award acceptance and award agreement for the IDPR Off-Road Motor Vehicle Grant. This is exciting.
Yes, good morning. Happy to let you know we have received the grant for, uh, put toward the Francis Wallace Vault Toilet. The amount is sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. So what I'm asking you to look at and sign is acceptance of that award. And then I will go to send this back to IDPR, uh, and then they'll sign it from their end. And then be able to get, uh, Dave to start working on the project.
So will this cover all of the costs or will there be some? When it sends, department will fund forty-five hundred, so that's all it's going to be, seventy-six? This is really exciting. I think it's, anytime we can improve our facilities with this type of, uh, stuff. I, I'm really excited about starting to do this with our projects. Do you have any questions on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
We'd move that we, um, sign the award acceptance and award agreement for the IDPR Off-Road Motor Vehicle Fund Grant to install vault toilets at Francis Wallace.
Second.
I'm moving in second at all in favor.
It's about time.
I'm very excited about this. So these will be open in winter then also.
They'll be open all year.
All year, yeah.
That's awesome.
We have a couple of minutes. Dave, um, have you heard anything more on expanding the Francis Wallace site?
From what I understand, we are allowed to expand the footprint of the parking area, but we're not allowed to import any materials such as gravel or drain rock to improve that site. So we can clear it, we can put a road down into it. But then during the winter, what it would be is just, you know, a freestyle cycle. So if you were parked down there, then you might end up hub deep in mud or slush.
So how did we do the site in the first place?
We, we got approval to expand the footprint, but not to improve the, the parking lot.
The original parking lot.
Oh, I, man, that predates my time.
They had to allow us to do the original parking lot in the building.
This is closer to the river, so it's, it's got wetland concerns. I didn't know that much.
So that's what they're going off of.
Right.
Is that under the IDPR rules or is that DEQE, you know, who, who put those?
Well, IDL is the land manager that we're working with on that. So it would be probably the next step is to see if there's any leeway in that. You know, to me, having a mud parking lot doesn't do us much good.
And it's not good for the environment down there.
Right.
So, I mean, gravel's far better for that.
You would think so.
Of the area than.
Yeah, it's, I, I.
So you have this on your agenda to follow up?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't understand how we got to this point with approval, but not being able to put anything down there because it, it doesn't really serve its purpose. So, um, we are looking at like the parking structure for next year as far as removing most of the overnight traffic in there, putting it down at Brush Creek, um, and hopefully we'll have something to bring to you like in the next month.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for watching that. I appreciate it. So find some opportunities there. Um, up next is the ten-ten, and I do know that Tracy is going to, uh, call in. Did she ask her team to sign?
She did, Madam Chairman.
So if you want to mute us then until ten-ten? Sure. Welcome back to our morning meeting of July 7th. Up next is our ten-ten, approval of the lease agreement with Idaho Ignite. Not really approval of the lease agreement because we don't have one in place yet. But it is to discuss what the terms would be and then also the requirements that Tracy is looking for in order to prove the site, um, so that it will meet the needs of Ignite. So Tracy, were you able to come up with a list of the things that we need to include in that lease agreement?
Um, well, I did, I did definitely want to discuss it. Um, I'm waiting to hear back from some of the other people that are, um, wanting to help us as well. But basically, we definitely, for us to be able to get the license for the childcare center, we would have to have, you know, the fencing done, the equipment up, have the space completely childproofed. I do believe, you know, some renovations will have to take place. It is in great condition, so I don't feel like the improvements are because it's not in good condition. It just needs to meet the requirements of the state. Um, we will be doing ICCP, so Idaho Childcare Program for families that can't afford childcare. So it does add a little bit of a component, but also is a great resource for families.
So on the outside, um, I had Terry and her guys go and measure that outs- outside square footage.
And we were kind of looking at the middle portion of that. So ha- leaving, um, some yard on either side and having the middle area fenced with the, the playground equipment in the middle.
So Tracy, you guys looking at, once this is approved and signed, uh, starting work immediately?
Um, it sounds like there's somebody in there till August fifteenth. So I felt like once they were out, you know, I, I would definitely want to be starting something by September first. I just need to, um, as soon as this is approved, I'll call the state, find out when they're able to come up and inspect that location. And that'll give us more information on what needs to be changed, what needs to be added for their recommendations. And I would also need to have the fire department come in and do an inspection. So those two things would give us, you know, do we need to move anything? Do they need anything different? I mentioned to Sherry, the bathrooms might, I feel like they probably will be okay, but that's something else I need to get approval on as well.
All of these changes are, uh, county, Dave? No, because it's, uh, some of the outside Tracy talked about, she has some supporters that are willing to help invest in that. I think whatever she is required to do for the daycare should be at their expense as a tenant improvement. If we want to add to that, then, you know, we can go ahead and do that. Or if we can get a grant on behalf of the county to do some improvements. If we do have to do something with the restrooms, that's our building. So that would be a major improvement, but just small improvements. I was really impressed. I haven't been in there since the church had been in there. And I don't know if you guys have, but they did a lot of work on that side of the building. It was great.
Is the church, the ones that are in there till August fifteenth, or are they already moved out?
No, they have not moved out yet. He's hoping August first, but he said give them till August fifteenth just to make sure.
Commissioner's, just my apologies for interrupting. Uh, myself and the grant writer have a meeting with Idaho Department of Commerce to find out what type of grants we potentially could apply for. So we do have a meeting with Department of Commerce tomorrow.
Awesome.
So rent, we're currently getting four hundred and fifty or something like that, an off amount, you know, five hundred a month. Is that, is that fair and equitable or?
We asked the senior center to cover snow removal and power utilities, so I just think it needs to be repaired.
So, but the five hundred and then they would pay for certain things on top of that.
I think that's, that's workable.
So tenant, power, we need to, Doug, do we get separate bills for those two different ends? Are we handling that right now with the county's paying all or?
Right now, yeah, the county is covering all of the costs of the.
Okay, so we're gonna have to figure out with Scott if there's a way to break out that power. Cause the senior center, um, they're only using it two days a week. Tracy would have most of that, so maybe it's a.
But it's, it's all on under one meter.
It is on one meter.
Is there a way to put a meter splitter on there somewhere? No?
It, it would cost a good bit to do that. You'd have to separate panels. It's just, it wouldn't be feasible to do that.
Tracy, we may need to work together to try and do some kind of a prorated, prorated something, or?
Nope, that's fine. I'm not worried. I mean, I feel like we can easily work that out.
Cause you'd have to have separate furnaces, separate, that would be a lot of, a lot of work.
Okay.
Um, so you mentioned snow removal utilities. What was the other thing you mentioned? That they pay for?
I think that's it. The furnace, is it, is it electric? It is, and I know that they, it needs to be upgraded. So hopefully if we're talking with those guys, that we can, um, find out what kind of grants would be available for improvements to infrastructure like that, a furnace. I know the senior center qualifies. I don't know if the other does, but we talked about going to the workforce development council to see if they have any grants remaining too. So maybe Ken could call them and see if there's some funding available there. That's how we got some of the stuff from the past, so.
And hopefully, if we can say something like we are a five oh one C three, we are doing the, you know, Idaho children or Idaho childcare pro- uh, project. You know, we are wanting it to be as cheap as possible for these families. Hopefully, you know, something will, will be able to come out of that. And we're gonna look as well, so if we're able to find something and we can partner, that'd be great too, so.
Tracy, have you talked with Trace McKellup to see if he has funding?
Um, I have talked with him. Um, I need to talk with him more. I told him that I was having this meeting today. So I will reach out to him right after this and just see what they have. I know they want to support us, so.
And I know they have quite a bit of funding available right now that needs to be used by the end of the year. So there might be some opportunities to apply for something there too.
Okay.
All right.
I will touch base with him for sure.
I believe Scott, if I remember right, said he'd like to get rid of those electric furnaces and go to gas.
Yeah.
Can't quite remember what our discussion was. A lot more efficient.
And who did you guys use to, um, get a bid? Because I, I know, um, my husband works really closely with A-one heating. It's possible, you know, because we are a nonprofit, maybe they would work with us and help us getting something a little bit cheaper, so I can check that out too.
And I don't know who Scott used. I think next up forward then is we will draft a lease agreement with some of these items in it. Um, we'll continue down the path and figure out where some funding mechanisms might be. And then the, it looks like the fencing was four hundred and fifty feet in order to do around the area. So I don't know if that was the whole area, Tracy, or if that was just the area that you want. Um, that seems like a lot. That seems like it's the whole area. If the county wanted to fence the whole thing, keep the deer out. I mean, if we do want to do some improvements there, if we can find a grant to do some improvements for a little community area, then we might want to fence that whole thing anyway, and maybe we would pay for proportionate share of that.
Okay.
Sounds like we still have some things to work through, but I do think that we can get there and get an agreement signed if you want to start moving forward on your end with the things you need to figure out.
So if I, oh, sorry. If I call the licensing, is it possible if they're able to come sooner than the fifteenth, that they could come in and just look at the space? Or should I just tell them after the fifteenth?
No, I'm sure it's fine. Yeah, well, we've got keys to it. We can just, we can get in. We'll just have our buildings and grounds group work with you on the date and time that you need.
Okay, the only reason I say that is if we aren't going to fence the whole area, there may be some guidelines on how far the fence has to be from the playground equipment and those types of things. So I'd wanna just have some more details.
Any other questions you guys can think of?
No.
All right, we will get back to you with some of the initial documents and we'll move forward.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks Tracy.
Have a good day.
You too.
That's exciting to see that being something happening.
Yeah, it is exciting. And have it so supportive of the community. I think it's gonna be a great resource for the community. Up next is our ten-twenty action item, um, with our weed and pest control supervisor, Steve Anderson, Mr. Anderson. Mosquito surveillance. Yes, I surveyed some this weekend.
Yes, there's, with all the rain we got, they're pretty, pretty bad right now.
People are starting to huckleberry pick, and it's like, who won, the mosquitoes or the huckleberry pick?
So yeah, this is our annual grant. This year we qualified for three thousand dollars. It was a pretty hard one to get qualified for or to get approved. Uh, they had some changes in health and welfare. It expires at the end of this month. So I only got three weeks left to spend this grant money, but I don't think that'll be a problem.
Do we have any mosquitoes yet that carry West Nile?
We do not. Uh, we're eating more and more of the, the Q-Lex mosquitoes, the bad ones, but, uh, we haven't tested positive yet. And I'll, I'll keep you informed if we do, but yeah, there's a lot of mosquitoes hatchin' right now.
Oh, down Route Adams Circle down there in that area next to the river.
Oh, yeah.
They were, they were hungry.
Yeah. Willing to take your way right now.
I'll make a motion that we approve the health and welfare mosquito surveillance agreement.
Let's move in second at all in favor?
Hi.
Hopefully you found some fun over the fourth.
Been close to home. A lot of us did, except for Dave, he had to go down the valley with forty thousand people going up and down the road. But it was still exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, bud.
Okay. Dave, we've got five minutes. Is your other people gonna be here? I would assume that you've got Matthew here. Hi, Matthew. Steve, welcome.
Yeah, I guess it just depends which, which would you, which would you like to do first?
Well, I don't want to keep him here if it's gonna take quite a long time on horse thief. So maybe we wait until ten-thirty and wait for the other gentleman and do it first.
No, I think they were planning on being here closer to eleven.
Oh, okay. All right, so we will go ahead and get started then.
Do horse thief?
We have to wait. Yep.
I think they were probably out in the hallway, I believe.
What an exciting project.
You can go sit back there. Come on up.
Oh, I'll be back here.
Check in.
Other representatives for my agency.
Dave, you can take one of these too if we need another one. I don't need three. Doug has to.
You guys have a copy of the business plan?
Yes, we did.
You want me to put it on the screen also so we can kinda?
Uh, up to you.
You can put it on the screen.
Let's do it, right?
You have it? Doug, if you want, I can do it in mine.
That's your call.
See if I have. I've got a US, well, maybe. There we go. Now, let's see. If I unplugged the wrong one, of course I did. There's a problem with this drive. Scan the drive now and fix it. Let's see. I don't do this very often with.
Horse thief business plan, final one. Get the fifth one down.
Come on up, come on up. We're just gonna have a conversation around the table.
All right.
Just sit and watch.
Jeff, do you want me to put this into, like, it's got two pages showing, how do I go to like one page? Do you want that?
Just go to the bottom right screen. Keep going to the right, further, add the plus sign. Click that a few times. There you go.
Perfect.
Jesus.
Went down there one morning.
Venus is our clerk. It's never been given to me as a title. Okay, welcome to our ten-thirty workshop. We are very excited to have, uh, to discuss a management plan on horse thief's reservoir and Valley County Parks and Rec by the director, Dave Bingham.
Perfect. Well, you guys got the information that we are gonna be talking about in your packets last week. There's a lot of information. Um, I sent you guys the original description of the campground that we got from Fish and Game as well as the business plan that we put together to present to you guys today. So just a little bit of the history was that, um, you guys all know Jordan and, um, Emily and Jeff from our rec board here. We also have Cameron Senna in the back who's part of our rec board. Um, and then Scott from the YMCA as well. So kind of the history was, is Jordan threw this out probably what, a year and a half ago or two years?
Probably like a year ago, yeah.
And it seemed kind of like a funny conversation, but it didn't seem like it went very far. He kept bringing it back around, and sooner or later I started listening to him a little bit more intently. And, um, what happened is essentially they were looking for a new management partner on the horse thief property. So YMCA has decided that it's no longer within their capacity to do that, uh, management out there at the park or the campground, and, uh, Fish and Game is looking for a new partner. So with that, we have this proposal that I think is very well put together. The folks from the advisory board reviewed it, the original proposal, and then decided they liked it and thought it would be something that you guys would be interested in. And so we formed a subcommittee and then we put together a business plan so that we could present that to you guys so that you would have some idea of what we'd be looking at. Thinking through this, you know, with Larry before he left, we realized that we would need an employee to manage this site because it represents, you know, eight times the growth that we've seen in the last ten years as far as our department goes. So that's part of this proposal is that we did put a request in for a seasonal employee for fiscal year twenty-six. That request is to be funded for one year, and then the campground proceeds would cover the salary for that person after the first year. In addition, we'll have, uh, stipends for hosts on site, and those would be, according to HR, those would be covered under a contractor agreement, so they would not be employees.
Dave, can you go ahead and introduce everybody?
You bet. Yeah, Jordan Messner from Fish and Game. Um, I don't know you.
I'm Josh Royce, the regional supervisor for Idaho Fish and Game.
Thanks for coming.
Meet you.
Jeff Musso with the Recreation Advisory Board.
Emily Bettine with the Recreation Advisory Board.
Hey, Bingham with Parks and Rec. Again, Cameron Senna is in the back.
Perfect.
And Scott.
Scott's with YMCA.
He's one of the directors of Treasure Valley YMCA and intimately involved with the camp, so.
Yeah.
Worked with him a lot.
Scott's been involved since like the inception of the relationship between Fish and Game and YMCA.
He knows, uh, all of the ins and outs and what we should be asking and what we, what we should be aware of before we take this on.
Exactly, and they've, they've given us a lot.
Chairs if you want to come up and join us. Come on up and then, then you don't have to, uh, you can turn your back to us. We can hear you then.
Scott's been very helpful in giving us a lot of the information that TB YMCA has about operations, operating plan, everything like that. So it's been super helpful to put together all of the information that we're gonna talk about today, so. Makes it really nice, along with Jordan has done the same.
So where would you like to start? Uh, do you want to go through this? Do you want?
Yeah.
Go to the business plan or?
So let's, let's go up to the top, so executive summary, then I'll just walk through the, kind of the sections and give you what I think are the most salient points. And if you have any questions along the way or anything, interrupt, cause I'll, I'll grow a horse and I'll be able to talk a whole lot. So, um, so we, it's like Dave said, we began working this really from the council standpoint. Uh, we had a, a meeting with Fish and Game where Jordan came and gave the presentation that you've got in your file that really outlined the history and, uh, kind of what was happening was horse thief on a reservoir recreation area and specifically, uh, the campground. Uh, from that, we had a few conversations with, uh, with Jordan and Fishing Game, uh, with Scott Gill, with Treasure Valley YMCA, and then we, we, Recreation Council, put together a, a little subcommittee, uh, to go put together a business plan. One of the things that we thought the best way to present this to you, kind of in a, you know, unbiased type of fashion, was to really look at a business analysis and then a, a business plan kind of path forward for three years about how this might be managed, uh, if, if it were approved, so. That's what we put together, that's what you have in front of you today. I just want to make probably one thing clear and I think Scott will probably, uh, talk about this too, but there, there was a little bit of a question initially on, on, so why was Treasure Valley YMCA pulling out of this? Is there, is there a big problem up there or, you know, uh, what's going on? Will the county be held, holding the bag on this because of things that we don't know? Well, that, that's absolutely not the case, uh. Uh, having, having a very specific discussion with Scott Gill on this. Um, they're ending their role at the end of this year, so twenty twenty-five. Refocus their resources on the core mission of operating their camp up there, so they have four hundred and fifteen acres on the south end, um, of the, for the YMCA camp, and that's what they want to kind of go. He said there are, they identified no issues with campground facilities or their operations leading to that decision. So next, uh, just, uh, go down through the campground description. So Horse Thief Reservoir was, was, uh, built, constructed in nineteen sixty-seven, so quite a long time ago. Uh, it was built as a public, public fishery and it was built using, uh, what, what are known as wildlife and sportish restoration funds. And it's important to know that because funds from campground revenue and things like that still need to be focused on that. At Horse Thief or potentially other places, the source of those funds are, are important.
So Jeff, with that being said, that was one question I had, so if those need to go back into the facility, how do we pay an employee?
So, if those funds can be used and have been used today to, to pay employees at the Tre- uh, Treasure Valley YMCA, campground hosts, stipends and things like that, so, so. We'll get into it a little bit more when we talk finances, but, funds can be used certainly for the operations and the maintenance of the campground in the area there. So whether that's a, the county campground lead that Dave's talking about or whether that's the hosts, you know, that, that's appropriate.
Doesn't have to be capital improvements, it can be.
So I got one real question. Well, actually it's for Jordan. Um, your guys' role in this whole changeover and ongoing. What will that be?
Yeah, um, thank you Commissioner. I guess I wanted to elaborate really, really briefly and then I'll get to answer your question on, um, how we got to where we are now looking for a managing partnership with you guys. When we started developing campgrounds, we had every intention of Parks, uh, Idaho State Department of Parks and Rec taking over campground management. And we've gotten, um, through a lot of development since that time, twenty eighteen, and, um, Parks and Rec still said, I think it, I think it had a lot to do with the fact that they needed FTEs which have to be approved by the legislature, positions approved by the legislature in order to, just like they're looking for an employee, they felt that they needed a, a full-time year-round employee that would have had to have been approved and I think that was like a big Achilles heel to them being able to take over management of Horse Thief. Um, the reason YMCA stepped in was because they said, well, this is the front door to our camp, we want it to look nice, we want it to be operated at a, you know, really top-notch facility. Um, we will step in and management, manage it in the meantime until IDPR takes it over. Well, recently we, you know, found out it's likely not gonna go to IDPR and so, that's what made them make the decision to, hey, we don't know when the end is in sight here, let's focus on our core mission. So to answer your question, Fishing Game's role, um, we manage the reservoir, we manage the dam, we manage the fishery, we manage the boat ramp, the docks. Um, and then we also coordinate a ton, collaborate a ton on, you know, um, cleaning the restroom facilities, um, you know, if, yeah, tree thinning's a big one. The for- we're also responsible for all the forestry management, we work with IDL, um, for, we've done some timber sales out there and stuff like that. We work with Southern Idaho Timber Protection Association to do some of the hazard tree management and stuff like that within the campgrounds. We turn on the water, turn on the power every year, we do all the winterization of the water and power for the facilities and all that kind of stuff. Um, and we intend for our crew to continue to do that same part. So certainly continue managing the fishery, boat ramps, the dam, the water management and the timber management and all that sort of thing, and then, you know, as far as campground management, we're right there as support being needed.
If I could add just a little bit, uh, missionaries, uh, one of the most important aspects of this, one of the probably primary questions and Jeff may have answered this with the packet material, but, question that we get frequently is, um, why isn't Fishing Game managing this? We, we own a couple of campgrounds across the state. Statutorily, we are not authorized to collect fees for campgrounds. So our, our fee structure is very defined in statute and it is for largely tags and license fees and some shooting range fees now. But we do not have the ability to charge a fee at a campground. So any IDF campground is free unless otherwise operated by a third party that can charge. That there's not precluded to do that, and so, we have not sought that legislative authority to charge a campground fee. And so, uh, as he's, as use increases, the demand on staff time and resources increases and it becomes where we're unable to meet that demand without additional funds which are largely, um, hunter, angler and trapper funds. Not necessarily recreationist funds, so that's some of the financial separation as well, but, um, as Horse Thief in particular continued to grow, the, the intent was when it was initially transferred to Fishing Game by Boise Cascade and a land swap, the initial intent in the sixties was for the state parks to take it over at that time. We've slowly, as demand and use has increased, we've improved services. Jordan's done an outstanding job of keeping that ball moving down the road and we've improved it so that it wasn't, um, a blight in the county or in YMCA's front yard, but as you improve those services, demand increases and we've just exceeded the ability to meet that demand without a third party operating this campground for us, so. Um, and we do not intend to seek legislative authority to charge campground fees at this point because we've really only got three campgrounds that, uh, are, are in this situation, so.
Thank you.
Behold our, our questions as much as we can.
That's okay, it's a great, it's a great discussion. Because they're in this order doesn't mean they have to stay that way. Uh, so the campground, uh, there's about four hundred and twenty acres out there that Fishing Game owns, about two hundred and seventy over there's the reservoir. And the rest is the land which includes the campground. Uh, you all have been, and if you haven't been, you should go see it. Um, nine miles east of here and, uh, about fifteen minutes away, so. It's not, it's not really off the beaten track. People kind of say that, but I don't, I don't think that's true at all. It's no further away than, uh, than the campground's on the far side of Cascade and things like that, so. I think it's a great, a great opportunity location wise. Treasure Valley YMCA started working with Fishing Game in two thousand seventeen. That was also the same time that, I know Fishing Game started the major reconstruction of the campground. Before two thousand seventeen, it was just kind of a roughed out, not super nice, you know, place to, uh, place to go, not, certainly not the campground sites and the loops that are in, in there today. Since eighteen up until this year, they'd spent about three million dollars on improvements and that certainly can be seen by all the paving work that's been done, all the campground sites that are just, just really, really nice, the, the tables, uh, and things like that. And then this year, um, Jordan can talk a little bit about it, they're putting about, about three point five million more into it. So, so these campground loops were constructed, you know, starting really in eighteen. Uh, they've got a lot of capital money that have gone into them, and if you go out, if you go out and look at it, you can really see it. This is a, this is a, a very, very nice campground and in, at an extremely nice location, so it's, uh.
So three and a half million more is what you're gonna spend on this thing?
Yeah, so this is money that, um, was slated for Horse Thief by the State Outdoor Recreation Finance Advisory Committee. And we're planning to do the, the west side road that goes all the way into the Y camp. Driven that road out there. Shape, so that'll be a huge upgrade that will benefit everyone that uses the area, not even just campers. Um, and then we also plan to install, um, water and electric hookups into two of the loops so that there, there's two kind of more higher-end loops in terms of services in there.
Are there any plans for this, for expansion in the, this would be the northern side here?
There aren't plans, no. Right now, we did do, uh, two timber sales over two years, um, one on the west side of that northern arm and then one on the east side of that northern arm there, and so, um, that's been thinned out and, uh, yeah, there isn't plans for development in there.
I've been, I have been up there, it's a beautiful facility. Really is a crown jewel as we continue to improve it. It's a great location in the valleys.
You can see the, uh, the campgrounds, there's six loops, uh, really five on the west side and one over on the east side. Those loops right now, some of them are, are, are more paved and defined than others, there's some still, I say undefined, it's like it has a gravel road. Uh, but, but they're all, they're all very nice. There's a hundred and ten camp sites uh, within those loops and then there's some additional sites for the, uh, for the campground hosts. There's no reservation system currently in place, so it's a kind of a first come, first served and, system, so that's an, an opportunity for an improvement that, that we would look at. The average occupancy rate of it now is about thirty-nine percent, so. I, I would think it's maybe up this year because judging from this weekend, you know, there's, there's a million people around, but, uh, I'm sure the campground was full this weekend.
Let's hope they're going to Harden Campgrounds, not just in the forest.
Right. The campground right now is supported by six campground hosts that, uh, work throughout the season and they rotate days on and off, so. Those are usually couples that's, that, that Scott, uh, Treasure Valley YMCA have been able to get and, and, uh.
Have you had any problems with getting campground hosts?
We have not, and in fact, quite often we have returning hosts. And all four of them that are here this summer, um, have been here multiple seasons, um, and enjoy coming back. So it's, it's been a benefit to the Y. When Fishing Game came to us and asked whether the Y would consider taking on management of it, as you all have mentioned prior to that, there was no fee. There were really minimum limits as to how long you could camp there. Camp sites were not well-defined, there were just rock circles for fire pits, no picnic tables. Dennis Hardy and Joe Kosky came to the Y and said, um, Fisher, uh, Parks and Rec is not going to be taking it over. Um, and that's not the business you all are in. Um, and the professional staff at the Y said, well, that's not the business we're in either. But Randy Spiewick and myself as volunteers and I'm Chair of their advisory committee, we looked at it and said, um, first of all, we could clean up the front door and improve the entrance to the, to the Y camp. We can make it a safer area. Um, up until that time, we got the statistics from the Valley County Sheriff's Department, but they were averaging someplace around eighteen to twenty-four calls per summer at Horse Thief Reservoir for a variety of offenses. Since that time, it has pretty much dropped down to zero. Uh, we had a medical emergency call about two weeks ago and that's about the limit of it. And then collaborating with Fishing Game, we were able to apply for the, um, RP grants to improve the campgrounds and as you all have heard, uh, close to three million dollars has already been spent to improve those campgrounds. With the additional resources this year, it's gonna become even better. Arguably, I think we have some of the most beautiful campsites in the state. So we initially put in a fifteen dollar a night, um, fee. We had minimal kickback because we took over operation like July first and so, there were some people who for years, you know, for generations have been coming up, as they would say in camping here, I've never paid anything. It's, it's different now.
Times are changing.
Yes, yes, and we've had evidence to show benefit of that. We have, you know, compacted sand, uh, tent sites and, and, uh, picnic tables and, and the, uh, metal fire rings and defined and, um, a couple of the loops are blacktopped, some of them, uh, in conversation with Jordan, we decided to leave more rustic with gravel, uh, pathways or roadways, um. But the hosts, um, have not been an issue as far as recruiting them. And as I mentioned, in fact, quite often we have returning hosts because they really enjoy being up there. They also have enjoyed a relationship with the Y camp and we would anticipate that we would like to see that continue uh, with your group and with whatever hosts you have up there. Um, we have invited the hosts into camp for meals, um. And, you know, when there was a medical emergency two weeks ago, they immediately went to our camp, we had one of those defibrillator things or whatever. Unfortunately, the individual, um, had a cardiac arrest and was not revivable. But when the county group got there, they're going, my gosh, you're already here, you've already got the defibrillator, you've already been working on him, they were very impressed. So having the Y camp as such a, a convenient location for your camp and your hosts, you've got additional resources that they can call upon and we would like to see that relationship continue.
I hope when I pass, it's in a beautiful place.
Would I have to go?
We all are not getting out of here alive, so.
We, as we started looking at this, we, uh, we, we still owe you a final presentation on the Recreation Strategic Plan. You've seen a draft of it now, I, I believe. But we did go back and make sure that we are aligned with that strategic plan. There's three goals in there. Two of them concern really, you know, public services, camping, recreation, things like that, but one of them, one of them ties to really cooperative work with other agencies. And that one really fits in this where we're working with Fishing Game where we've got ties to the, the Treasure Valley YMCA, so we thought that was, so there were three, three things that really tied, uh, from the strategic plan to this initiative. Uh, next thing, we just, uh, for Dave's, uh, Dave's help, we wrote a, a mission statement and, and, uh, four objectives, uh, basically surrounding the operation of the, of the campground at Horse Thief, so, probably the, the one that's most important in there, we're gonna dive into the finances, um. But we want to make this a self-sustaining, uh, endeavor, so there aren't additional county funds that need to be done, uh, to use for this, and in fact, we're even gonna look as we go through negotiations on the memorandum of understanding with Fishing Game that, that perhaps we can use some of the funds for other parts of recreation within the county that tie back to fishery or fishery habitat, things like that. In the past, what, uh, what Scott and his team have done, uh, in the, again, I'll talk about it in a minute, but in the last, in the last four years, revenue has always exceeded expenses. At the end of the year, there's a bit of a reserve. That reserve's been pumped back into doing additional improvements at the, at the campground or within that area. And so, our forecast says the same thing, but we're gonna apply a slightly different approach. Some of those funds would, you know, we'd look at using, uh, for, for additions or improvements within the campground. But some of those funds may also be available for doing things other within the county, uh, in the area of recreation, fishery, habitat, stuff like that, so maybe at Little Lake where we've, we've talked about, um, you know, improving some of the camping areas in there or at Boulder, the same thing, so it's a, it's a great opportunity to, uh, to be able. So it's a, it's a great opportunity to uh, to be able to maybe spread some of that money and do some more thing. But, but financial, financial stability, being able to run this, run this thing is, is no additional expense of the county is, is what we're focused on. It's been proven in four years to date and our forecast going forward, uh, you know, show the same thing.
We get there, I'll ask some questions because I'm not quite certain.
We're about to, we're about to.
Coming up with.
We're about to the fun stuff, so. Going on, uh, we did look at, on the, the management and operations, kind of a breakdown of the responsibilities between Fishing Game and Valley County. It's pretty similar to what it's been with the uh Treasure Valley YMCA. Those things are, there's things that are negotiable and there's probably a few things like forest management that, that is not in there that need to be added to Fishing Game's responsibilities. But starting in, starting in twenty twenty-six, which would be the starting year for Valley County operation, we would continue operations very similar to what is in place there today. So we would not, would not be raising fees. We would not be, you know, increasing the stipends of the uh, the, of the campground hosts.
So who, Jeff, under an MOU, who sets the rates, the, the nightly rates?
We set the rates with concurrent, with concurrent. We, the county does that with concurrents at Fishing Game. So we can't go in and set a thousand dollar a night rate. Uh, you know, that's probably not gonna work. So we, we're kind of a, I guess, I term it a cooperative management style with Fishing Game. There's the two parties on this. Uh, we would, but, but the county would have the authority to set those rates, but it would be in concurrents.
As far as we're concerned, it would be the county's call though, like as the, um, you know, we'd work together on a lot of the decision-making sort of things. Like for example, the, the pot of money that's left over at the end of the year and how that is used to be put back into Horse Thief. We coordinate on a lot of those decisions, but ultimately in terms of campground management, so decollection and stuff like that.
I'm always um cautious because when we do an MOU, you probably won't be here, I won't be here, and we don't know what the personalities will be at that moment in time. So I like to call out as much as possible to provide um, you know, conflict resolution now and instead of when we get there in the future. So anytime you say concurrents of two individuals, that always makes me a little more nervous. You know, I think it would be best to call out decision-making and who has that decision-making as we move forward. And I would like to see maybe if we could raise it five dollars a night or something like that.
We'll talk about, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, so, and, and I ju, but the clarity in an MOU is always best to do it upfront when we're both entering this contract and not when we have different personalities down the road that may or may not get along as well as you do.
So there, there's a lengthy MOU that's in place between Fishing Game and Treasure Valley YMCA today. We reviewed that. It is pretty detailed, but certainly that'll, that'll be the starting place that we would start from in, in preparing what we'd like to see and then negotiating, Dave negotiating with Fishing Game uh to basically find that all.
Yeah, see, I think we had that discussion uh back when Larry was here, I think. We were talking about light campgrounds across the state. Cause we know we've been behind the eight ball up here for a lot of years. And now this year, not this year, the last ten years, this place has been found out huge. And after this weekend, you can see that. So.
Revenue was down though in twenty-four, so I mean, the COVID years, you can definitely see we had a lot of people join us. You know, since then, it's down a little bit.
Right, last year, last year was the fire year.
Yeah.
So the campground closed for fires. So that's why when, I think when we really looked at this, twenty-three was a pretty good year to look at as a, as a model. The, the years before that were affected by the pandemic. Last year was affected by the fires. So if you wanted to pick one like most relevant year, uh, that, that was a good year. And that's what, when Jordan presented to us, that was the year that he really talked about and keyed on, so.
We really haven't seen a full year of a hundred percent operation out there yet because again, twenty eighteen is when we started doing the, the development. Twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, you know, there were a few loops closed through all that time. And then during last year, we basically donated all the campgrounds to the fire crews.
So on the MOU and putting together the MOU, we would, we would, what we would recommend would be a multi-year MOU. And probably with extend, extension provision in it. Uh, there'd probably be a ninety day cancellation period by, ninety day notification cancellation period by either party. I know with, with the, with the county, there's always an issue of obligating to the future, so.
We have to have an opt-out in our.
Yep, so that's, that's how we would.
When you're saying multi-year, are we talking ten years?
Probably ten year.
Five year, okay. I think if we're gonna get into something, the longer the better.
Absolutely.
We can actually plan accordingly and hire accordingly. That's my opinion. I'm speaking on behalf of all of us up here unfortunately.
We did take a quick look at similar campgrounds in the area, just uh, and, and kind of found what we expected. So uh, we looked at the State Park Campgrounds uh along Cascade, which, and then kind of looked in the middle of July, what the occupancy was. And that was, and that was done two, you know, a month and a half ago, uh, was about seventy-five percent. And then those are similar campgrounds to what Horse Thief is, I think. Although I think Horse Thief's maybe a little better. Uh, but we'll say, well, they're closer, but they're not closer. The ones on the west side are at least as far as travel as it would be to get to the Horse Thief campground. And then.
Different. Does this, this is boating, but, oh, I haven't really looked into what the boating rules are out here.
No wakes.
No wakes, okay.
So better fishing.
No wake, period. That's good. We need some of those.
Not motorized except for a trolling motor, isn't it?
Uh, you can have a gas motor, just no wake.
Can't make a wake.
Kind of like, like. Gotta keep your speed down. So yeah, there's some motorized fishing boats out there, but then lots of stand-up paddleboards and kayaks and stuff like that.
That's great.
And, you know, it's similar. It's lake, forest, fishing, quality campsites, things like that. You might not be able to do as much power boating.
We need some of those in the county too.
Yep, so. Okay, so let's talk about uh finances for a little bit. So when Jordan came and talked to us, he provided us with four years of kind of the financial summaries uh for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. And so um we looked, we looked at those uh pretty closely. Each of the year's income did exceed expenses, an average of about twelve thousand four hundred dollars each, each of the seasons. So that was good. So even in seasons with this problem or that problem, uh, it still was good. Average revenue from the camp fees during those, those years were uh roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars. Average expenses during those years were about sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Let me ask a question. You said that you donated the campsites to the, so the Y made a lot of money during that time. Is there anything that states that you could not have charged for the campsites? I mean, I guess I'm asking moving forward, if we have a fire in the area, can we charge?
Yeah, so I, I honestly, I screwed up on that one. Like the fire crews reached out to us because we own the land and said, can we use the campgrounds? And I said, yeah, absolutely. Got in touch with the Y. They said, yeah, cool, we'll shut down the campgrounds. The fire crews said, what do we owe you for the campgrounds? And I said, we can't collect any money on it. I should have put them in touch with the Y.
We had fire crews at the Y camp and that benefited us because we had to cancel all of our revenue generating um programs from, you know, middle of August on, which would have been a huge financial hit for us. But the fire crews rented our property from us and this check we got from the federal government pretty much compensated for the revenue lost from the Latin laws of programs. And I contacted Jordan and I said, and we lost quite a bit of revenue with the campgrounds. Well, we didn't charge for that, so.
Okay, that's what I was questioning that, you know, because that really severely hit that income. And I just wanna make sure we don't have that issue going for farther or further if we uh, we can charge. I just wanna make sure there wasn't any, anything.
The mechanism exists for that recuperation. We do as an agency realize that in other avenues, um, somewhat when, when our officers are conducting fire patrols, access patrols and things like that. So we, we have that established mechanism, but um if we, in this instance, we didn't pursue it.
Perfect. Just clarity.
So once we looked, we looked over the um, the past financials and, and got the presentation on that. Uh, for the business plan going forward, uh, we decided that it would be worth trying to put together some projections. And so uh, let's start, we looked at a hundred camping days per season. So basically starts the third week of May, goes through Labor Day. Uh, there is a potential that once you get going and everything, you could certainly extend that into September, which is probably one of the very nicest months in, that, that we have, so.
And really even October. I mean, the hunters are constantly saying, why, why don't we have any place to stay up there? So.
So anyway, there is a, and we'll talk about kind of the SWOT analysis we did, but in terms of opportunities, there is an opportunity there. Um, we used the, in putting together the estimate, I mean, you could build an estimate from the base up of if we know everything that we're buying and stuff like that. We did not do that. We used uh, it started with the expenses that were the average expenses from twenty-one through twenty-four. And then for twenty-six, which would be the first year of our operation, we took those expenses, we increased them by twenty percent. We had some additional adders that we put in for things that we, we, we knew would be. And we used the same stipend for the hosts. Uh, we added the Valley County lead and took out some of the, the money that was in there for the Treasure Valley YMCA folks. Um, there were some work improvements and then we added an additional ten percent contingency on top of everything. So that would be money for things that we, we know are gonna happen, but we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. Which is, that's an appropriate amount for this type of a, uh, this type of a estimate. Uh, from twenty twenty-six, for twenty twenty-seven, we added in, uh, on expenses, we added in a fifteen percent increase on expenses over twenty-six. Uh, we expect in there to be adding trash, probably the reservation system, um, additional marketing, uh, looking at uh some, some improvements in cellular service uh for that area. So there's some additional expenses that are happening in there. And then in twenty-seven, we also added about seventy-five hundred dollars to start some uh ceiling of the asphalt roadways, which would go on a cycle uh for maintenance of those. And then in twenty-eight, we did roughly the same thing. We added fifteen percent more over twenty-seven. And we did include a stipend, a stipend increase in revenue. Uh, so for revenue, the only thing we looked at was revenue from campground. So there's probably some opportunities for some grants and other things that you can go after that'll help support the campground that we would do in cooperation with, with Fishing Game. But for this analysis, we just used the fees. So twenty-six, uh, fees are really dependent, the, the revenues really depend on what you're gonna charge people for a campsite and what your occupancy rate is. I mean, those are the, those are the two big ones. So in twenty-six, we stayed with roughly the same occupancy rate. I think it was thirty-nine percent average, we're at forty percent. We kept the fee the same at twenty dollars per night. The work that Fishing Game's doing this year, one of the big things is they're putting in some utility services to campsites in two of the loops. Last time I knew. With that, there's certainly an opportunity that you could look at, you know, an increase next year if you wanted to. You've certainly got a basis for doing that because I know, you know, you know, as well as I do, that people will gravitate towards campsites. So you can get water and, and power and so on. That's a good thing. But anyway, for the estimate, we did not do that. We stayed at twenty dollars a night. In twenty-seven, we increased our occupancy to fifty percent. We figured we would have a reservation system in which we think will help immensely with the occupancy of that campground. Right now, people go there, you know, not knowing if they'll get a campsite or not. Usually they always do because there's a lot of them and uh, but, but people don't know that and that may keep some people away. Having a reservation system up and running will take care of that problem.
What kind of marketing is currently being done? And is there a good marketing plan in place or?
So we currently have a national website that is maintained by Randy Spiewick. And then I maintain the Facebook page and I give um authorization to one of our campground hosts to manipulate the Facebook page so that they can put in immediate occupancy, you know, we're full, we're not full, whatever. Those are the only two things that we have ever done. Um, I'd be more than happy to hand over the Facebook page. And I grant you'd be more than happy to hand over the uh, so he's maintained the, I'm not ex- having you. Anyway, the, the, the URL, whatever it is, so that it's maintained until we could pass it off to somebody else. Randy now lives in North Carolina, but he's continuing to be generous and, and maintain the, the website page anyway.
Soul for service.
I think that's a good opportunity for us as well because increasing the visibility of this place, you know, as it becomes power and water for some of the sites, it's gonna attract larger vehicles, having a paved road going in there. That changes the dynamic of the whole facility quite a bit. And us being able to advertise that slightly better than what's been happening is gonna help us pull that revenue up.
And then in, in twenty, also Fishing Game has a website page on Horse Thief Reservoir and the campground and things like that.
We are running out of time, so we better speed up our questions.
So in each of the three years, we generate a profit. In twenty-eight, if we can do what we say we're gonna do, it's looking, it looks something like seventy-five thousand dollars. In addition to the work we did, Jordan, uh, in his presentation gave us what his thoughts were going forward for one year. And I think that profit in there was forty-five thousand dollars. So we're not, we're not way off base in what we're looking, what we're looking at. So the next thing we did, we did a, a SWOT analysis. So we looked at, for the opportunity, we looked at strengths, weaknesses, uh, opportunities that are out there and uh, and threats. And.
Hopefully you guys got a chance to look at all of this.
We kind of did this by brainstorming of the whole group, so uh, we tried to get as many thoughts as we could. You can see the strengths, I think we've talked about almost all of those. Fishing Game does have a very visible presence out there.
Jeff, why don't we hop down to the new, next steps?
Okay.
Because we're gonna be out of time and we did do this in our packets, so we should have had a chance to review all that.
So the advisory council uh from the work that we did recommends pursuing this opportunity. We think, you know, for everything that we've done over the last three years, this is a great fit. And we unanimously supported that and provided that to Dave. Uh, kind of going forward, we think uh from, from a county standpoint, you need to identify intent to Fishing Game. Uh, because if, if we don't take it, they're gonna need to do something else very quickly. And I think they would, I can't exactly speak for them, but I think they would sleep better at night knowing that the, the county was very interested in, in working together to make this, to make this happen. And whether that's a verbal commitment or a letter, I'll leave between the two parties to look at. Uh, from there, I think we delve into with Dave, Dave and his team putting together the MOU. So starting point is the one with Treasure Valley today. Uh, I think that would be reviewed with the commissioners uh before, before finalized with Fishing Game, so everybody was on board with that. Uh, we would, we would recommend preparing a transition plan, so how's this all gonna work in transition? Little details like Scott just talked about, the Facebook page, but kind of incorporate all those so you, you can do as smooth of transition as you can. Uh, probably refine the operating plan. So Scott did provide us the, the, the operating plan for the campground today. We would incorporate that and make that into a Valley County operating uh plan. Uh, prepare a budget and then, you know, really the next things are, are moving forward, kind of hiring, getting a, a posting for the seasonal hire. Taken off for twenty-six. So one of the things that we do need to look at, so there may be a little bit of money in twenty-five, but twenty-six, before we start getting any revenues in, there's gonna need to be some funds. Those funds, some of those funds may be available from, from carryover, from that revenue carryover from uh twenty-five. So at the end of the season, if there's some money left over, that may be able to be. from, uh, twenty-five. So at the end of the season, if there's some money left over, that may be able to be used going forward to set this up. Uh, also if there's any, like Dave talked about with the county hiring and things like that, so.
So Dave, we'll probably need to talk on the budget side of things. Now that I understand what your position was that you were hiring for, I'm wondering if you don't need a full-time and then just support the other programs, but with, you know, partial funding from this, so we need to talk about the budget.
Use of them.
Other thing I, one last thing, because I certainly haven't sounded positive enough to date. We've looked at a lot of the, things like, you know, and most everything's always up in the north end of the county. And people complain about that and, you know, that's where a lot of the, the tourism or recreational gather. This is a great opportunity for mid-county, south county. And it's something that could have, I think, a, a big economic effect on Cascade. Uh, a lot of those campers come into town and eat dinner and shop in shops and things like that. Larry Lacks now has cautioned us about focusing everything up north and you have to be careful of doing that. This is a great opportunity. It's not in the north.
Yeah, when Larry and I were sitting there and Jordan gave his presentation, Larry and I looked at each other and said, are you kidding me? Yeah. And now we got Dave just gonna push the show on down the road.
Well, one of the things that we challenged you guys to do is spread recreation throughout the county and quit focusing so much in, you know, just specific sites. So just spread some of that recreation use throughout the county. Be a very positive thing. Is this, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Is this plowed in the wintertime? Can this be used in the wintertime for snowmobile?
The, the loop or the road into the Y camp has been plowed. And I think that does open up an opportunity for some of the, the loops in the campground to be maintained as well. It's a really popular ice fish area.
Well, that's what I, I was thinking too about the other campgrounds that are all closing on Labor Day throughout the, and can we use some of these funds to plow some of those other areas for ice fishing on Cascade? Cause we had talked about, you know, people call us all the time, why are all the campgrounds closed? We don't have access to the, the lake. And so maybe we could spread some of that to create better opportunities to get there.
One loop, King's Point, that does not have a gate and it's got the boat ramp as well. And so literally campsites are available on King's Point year-round, as long as people can get into them. And so far, the Y has collaborated with Fish and Game to pay for half of the maintenance of the road coming in. And we contracted with Granite to keep it open during the winter. And Fish and Game often has got a fisheries weekend up there sometime in February, I think.
And do you guys, you use your camp in the wintertime also?
So we are not, um, year-round, um, using currently. Prior to us taking over operation of the campground, we didn't even have a year-round maintenance person living up there. And so part of the revenue from campground operation, you're talking about using part of the revenue for your seasonal one, we did the same thing, or are doing the same thing. So with the maintenance person having responsibility during the camping season for campground operation during the off-season, so we have a shared salary with that individual who's now up there year-round. We'll be operating from about, um, April first through November fifteenth.
Good to know. Do you guys have further questions?
No, I think, kinda what you alluded to, a full-time position, somebody that could stay up there during the whole camping season. Plus you use that individual for, you know, the off-season.
We've got campground hosts up there, so I don't know that they would need to be there all the time, but.
That would be an option for housing. That was one of the things that I thought was a bonus for that position is that could be a good option for the housing situation that we have, if they were somebody who wanted to stay up in the campground. But we would also be able to use that employee on other projects we need throughout the valley.
How much time does your employee dedicate to these campsites?
I would say, um, maybe ten hours a week, fifteen hours a week.
So there would be a lot of time.
Especially if you have really good hosts, and we, we have, very independent, very responsible. A lot of it is fee collection, management of the money is definitely.
If we get the reservation system, it's called that we're hoping to see for twenty-seven, that and potentially even a partial reservation for next year, I think that, that's gonna require a lot more time. There's a lot of translation between the hosts and the, you know, electronic version, so there's gonna be a lot more time involved.
So also add some efficiencies, cause you're not dealing with money, you're not having to go to HDA.
Definitely.
See the pluses.
A lot more cooperation as far as getting those sites marked and, you know, getting the, uh, reports to the, to the hosts and things like that.
And we could put Wellington on there too.
And that's the other thing, is I think that gives us great opportunity to put Wellington on our reservation system.
We can brush creek and brassy or something. All right, are we ready to move on this?
Sure.
I would entertain a motion.
It's not a action item.
Oh.
You know, I think what we were looking for is just your recommendation to start working, moving forward.
And I think we, we go ahead and, uh, take a vote on whether all of us are in favor of moving forward. That would just be it, so that there is something solidified for Fish and Game.
I'm in favor.
Is that in form of a motion?
It's close. I'm in favor of moving forward with, uh, with this application to look at the, uh, putting the management of Horse Street Reservoir into the purviews of Valley County.
It'll be dependent on coming up with an agreeable MOU.
Yeah, with some real MOU.
It's been moved in second, all in favor? Aye.
Yay.
Let's do something positive for the, the regional community.
Thanks guys.
Thank you so much.
So we've got this one, what's the next one we're working on?
Everyone wants to offload the toilet at Little Pet Land. Eric could probably use some work.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. This is really exciting for our region, so. Very positive statement. And what a soul for service, both of you and the gentleman that's still doing it from back east.
Well, we saw it as an opportunity and said, let's do this.
Yeah, good for you. I wish more people would step up and do those types of things. Only we didn't ask if you had anything to add.
Jeff put this together, I am here to support. Yes, thank you.
Yes, without a problem. Nice to meet you. Okay. Thank you, you bet.
Gosh, nice meeting you.
Thanks Jeff for all of the hard work. We're excited about our next projects. Oh. Absolutely. This is exciting. Exactly what we formed the rec council for. All right, good to see you.
Good to see you again. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the conversation on a ski lift at Brunnhage.
We're moving right into our next agenda item. So Dave, you're gonna have to help walk us through this.
Well, I think Brian should join me at the table.
Okay, Brian, come on up or no, do you wanna, I don't know that he can advise us at this.
He can answer questions, sure.
Okay.
Um, you bet. So the matter of hand is the, uh, request for qualifications for phase two of Sampson, uh, pathway, Sampson Trail Pathway. And what we did is we put out an RFQ, um, on the second of June. And, uh, we had two applicants that submitted their information by the deadline. And so what we're hoping to do is complete about a mile point one of pathway starting at Elo Road and going south to, uh, Pearson. And so we have a design for that that was done prior to phase one. And so where we are today is literally just looking at the RFQs that we got sent. And then, as I mentioned, there's a scoring rubric in there. And we would look at those, make sure that both of them were qualified on the scoring right rubric. And then proceed forward.
So if I am looking at their, we haven't done, not a scoring system before. This is new to the commissioners. And so if I'm looking at their proposal, their, uh, qualifications, we just go through and give them the actual pass fail code based on this information that they have provided for both of them.
Yeah, I, I, I think the way to approach this is distinguish this from the low bid proposals that you're maybe more accustomed to. This type of a process is designed to be a two-step process. The first is to evaluate that the contractor that you select has the necessary qualifications to, to complete the project. So, uh, the, the scoring system that Dave has, has designed is aimed at doing that evaluation. So the second step in the process is once you score it, the highest scoring contractor will then proceed to step two, which is negotiation, negotiating a contract. So you're not necessarily awarding a contract today, just making a determination that they have the necessary qualifications. If the first, uh, the, 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 the number one scoring contractor, we aren't able to uh, come to terms and, and phase two of contract negotiation will move to the next, the next contractor down the list. So, um, this is not about getting the lowest possible bid. There's other criteria that you're evaluating, uh, and on track.
I like this.
On-track negotiation is not part of today's evaluation, just that you're looking at have they done projects like this before? Do they have the experience, the equipment and the personnel to, to complete the project as you have it designed?
I know we asked Sad of Mara quite often on some of those bids, all of a sudden hears this real low bid and you go, oh my goodness.
And, and I'm, I'm hoping that the, the scoring criteria makes sense to you. If, if you have questions, you know, Dave or I, probably Dave better than me, cause he's the one that put it together, can answer those questions.
I think a lot of it for me is, is somebody walking us through that. You know, as we're doing it, cause we don't know this.
Sure.
But somebody walking us through it would help us, you know, and.
I think the best way to do is just jump in and look at both of the, the, um, the information that they provided to us. One of us just take notes, the other is gonna read through their it's not a resume, I guess, but their business.
Packet. The narratives that were submitted are really designed to give you the information to evaluate the, that scoring criteria. So, uh, take a look at their responses and see how you would rank those, uh, responses and then, uh, you know, go from there.
So do these entities understand that we have a limited budget? I guess I'm struggling a little bit that we just put out this RFQ and we, they, we don't have any budget limitations, so the companies don't even know if they could even do this project.
I've, I've chatted with both of the companies and they do realize that we're on a grant for this and that when we build the contract, there will be a not exceed amount in there. That's exactly what we do in phase one.
I would just drive how much we can do of it.
Yes. And that, that is gonna be one of the possibilities, is that we may complete a portion of the pop pathway down to a good stopping point and then additional funds.
Did we have the first portion of that? You already have the amount that it cost, cost us for that first portion?
So it's a very similar amount of, uh, construction that we did on the first phase and it came in at three hundred and just about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Now we're, we have two hundred and fifty to play with.
We have two hundred and fifty thousand right now. Valley County Pathways is actively, uh, fundraising through the nonprofit to help with that number. Um, we don't know what that number's gonna be right now. We've gotten a couple of small grants for signage and a few other additions on there, but we're still hovering very close to two fifty.
Okay.
Okay, so if we go through this, uh, first of all, insured, pass or fail, they both pass on that from what I can tell. From what I can tell, um, on the license, licensed through Idaho Public Works, so they're both licensed, so they both pass that. The type of the firm, uh, candidate should submit information about their firm that demonstrates the type of firm, location, time in business, organizational structure and key management. So the type of firm, they both are, uh, I call them dirt war companies, excavation companies, so they both get a two in that situation. They're both located in Valley County. I'm in business. Falvey's have been in business forty-one years, so he would definitely get a two. And the other gentleman, Coleless Construction, he entered in twenty seventeen. So, you know, this is where I would have a question. I mean, he's been in business for eight years, he's proven himself. So, I mean, even though he's not forty-one years, do you, you know, rate him less? It's not like he's been in business for six months and doesn't have the qualifications. So I'd give him a two also. Am I looking at that correctly?
I think, I think so, as I said. There, there is some, obviously, there's some subjectivity, uh, to this, but your, ultimately, the goal is to, uh, have a, have a number one and a number two, uh, proposal.
Well, if they're both qualified, then that's the problem at the end of the day, you know, then it comes down to whoever gives us the best bid.
There won't, you know, there's not gonna be a bid like there would be in low, in, in your low bid, uh, process. So you're going to rate them for qualifications first and then we negotiate a contract.
Yeah, as I say, I think, I, I think we'll probably come up with some different scoring, you know, move down a little further.
Yeah, cause I, I.
So.
It's kinda hard for me, cause I know both these gentlemen personally.
As do I. Small, small community. Organizational structure, so Falvey has eighteen professionals, so he definitely gets a two. Um, Coleless. I don't know how that, you, you don't need eighteen professionals for this job, so again, you're, this is being really objective.
I think they both, you know, probably through the top portion of this, they both meet the criteria. They're both reputable companies in our area. And I think like, once we get down, you know, to qualifications, experience of the key personnel, relative projects, experience, things like that, we might see a difference in the companies.
Uh, that only looks like maybe Coleless is two individuals, so they don't have the depth, so I would give them a one on that one personally. I don't know that that, if this is their only job, then two's plenty. That's true. Unless you need to and, you know, somebody's not available.
Isn't that the job of the business to make sure that they can get the job done?
I, well, I mean, that'd be like comparing us, I don't like this.
It, it's not easy. I mean, Falvey's, Falvey's got several people that work for him and I know Tom doesn't, but does that mean you can't do the job? It doesn't.
No, I mean, we, you have a small company, but that doesn't mean you can't compete with the big electrician company. You just, you have to manage your time wisely.
Exactly. So it's a tough, it's a tough deal.
Yeah, well, we gotta get down through this, so do you guys wanna give them a two or a one on that for Coleless? Like two.
Where are you at?
Organizational structure. I gave them a one because there's only two people versus Falvey's eighteen. What do you wanna give them?
Organization, I would say leave it at a two. That's just my personal.
identifies key management. They both identified their key management.
Yep.
They both get a two on that. Qualifications and experience of key personnel. So one does ten with key personnel. So relevant experience. Uh, Falvey has two foremen. Each bringing over eight years of project experience and have successfully delivered dozens of excavation projects, including trail, wetland and access improvements. Also, they have crew leaders, skilled field profession, or personnel. They have equipment management. Qualifications of key personnel. So they've already worked on this pathway. That gives them a higher score in my opinion. Same experienced team that successfully completed phase one will be the professional leading phase two.
I would, could only give them a higher one if, if we had gone through the same process before and not just a low bid process.
We did, we did go through the same process, we only had one.
The RFQ, you did the RFQ.
One packet that was submitted, yes.
That was Falvey's.
So relevant project experience, oh, that's the next one. So I think we give Falvey a ten on that. Or qualifications, Coleless, let's see what their qualifications are. Approach to the project, so. Mountain enrichment qualifications, okay, so Casey Dickinson, he's got twenty-two years of construction experience, seven years of service in McCall. Light development and snow removal, he has storm water pollution prevention. So he's got town homes, he did do the city pathway adjacent to Highway fifty-five, so he does have that pathway. And then residential foundations and slab on grade. I would, I would write them down just a little bit, Falvey has more trail experience.
The principal project manager has several pathways.
I'm sorry?
Uh, the principal project manager did a pathway. He did one in Arizona and one in McCall.
That's from Shore Lodge to the Whitetail Club.
That one looks pretty nice.
Alright, what do you guys want to do? Still think Falvey has more pathway experience in wetlands.
You know, as far as.
Brown Park.
You're talking about qualification and experience of keepers, is that what you're doing? Just because of the. Keepers and other, I I would say Falvey gets ten, you know. Coleless might get an eight.
That's the way I was leaning.
But that's. It's just me.
That's the way I was leaning too, so. Relevant project experience. So Falvey did Sampson, Woolly Boardwalk, Brown Park Improvement, Sugarloaf Boat Route. Boat ramp and pathways, Big Sage Campground, Fuller Park. Windsor Center River Trail, Open River Linear Network, that one's in Connecticut.
I think both these guys have done very good, from what I'm seeing here, very good projects. These are both quite capable. And do it a quality, give it a, give it a quality project, supposed that way.
Coleless also gave good pictures. Of their projects, the fairways at Whitetail. Shore Lodge cottages at Whitetail. And break it down, or specific to this. Relevant project experience. So he has like three or four projects, Falvey has ten. Again, I would do ten and eight.
And Falvey's been here a lot longer too, so.
I don't know if time of business should, it should be quality of business, not time of business, time and business.
What do you want to give them?
This is just so subjective, that, I mean, how do we know that any of these projects were even done well on either side of them? Good question. We can list all the projects we want, but unless we know if they were done to spec, were completed on time, were came in under bid.
We're, the only thing we know is what's been done for us, and that's was the Sampson Trail. Which we know what came in, we didn't have any problems being over budget there, did we, or timing or anything else?
No, everything went very smoothly with that, it did come in over the two hundred and fifty thousand that we had allotted, and we actually with the. Contribution from the county pathways, we had three hundred thousand available. Coming slightly over, but that was also our first round with this kind of a project.
Was there reasons behind it?
Uh, you know, pretty much trucking and all the other things that we had. Probably the largest single thing that came in over budget on the first phase was the traffic control. And that's one of the things that we've been talking about with the road department, is what level of traffic control do we need for Pearson to Elo?
Yeah, relevant project experience, I'd I'd put them even. That's just. Just from my construction experience, I look at things. Approach to project, what do they mean by that?
Both, both of the packets have kind of their timeline and approach, is how how they would do the project. So, you know, I, if you had a chance to read through that, you know, both of those look like to me that. They had a good overview of what they were intending to do. And a good timeline, and we do want to get this done before the snow falls in late October, early November, so we put a November first. Hard cutoff on it.
Right. And it's, you have both those in here also. Those schedules, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, they have.
Timeline and fixed.
Timelines and then sort of the. Their their approach to how they would get the project finished and. Put those schedule.
November one.
Right, like basically the first part would be, you know, working with us to get details worked out and then. You know, communication with homeowners, folks in the community. And then getting down to work as far as, you know, grubbing the material off the pathway and starting to construct it.
Yeah, Falvey says we are confident in our ability to meet the November one deadline.
What has a really detailed.
One of us is starting in August. And we give both of them their their approach to the project, both of them get a ten because and their proposed schedule, they both meet our guidelines.
I agree.
The schedule.
I think, yeah, those are almost exactly the same. I do agree.
Gives me comfort is just knowing that Falvey did the first one, we've already experienced what what is there, I mean, there nothing against Coleless at all. I know Casey.
Well, and I was gonna say, I think that was part of this, is this is kind of a subjective, really to go through and try to get there, but that would weed out. You know, grossly underqualified contractors, and in this case, I think we have two contractors that are well qualified for the project that we're looking at. And so, you know, that was one of the reasons I wanted to ask Oki a couple of questions, was just in our. Proposal that we sent out, it says that we could have second step be a bid submission, and so would that be a fair way to move forward?
Yeah, yeah, if if you if you feel like both contractors are equally qualified, then we can, we can. Put together a bid proposal and let that, um, let that kind of be the determining factor.
I I feel good with, you know, as much as we've seen here and read, these guys are both. Like they put out a good product.
Yeah, the purpose, just just as an overview, the purpose of this process as opposed to a low bid is. On on occasion, you're gonna get an underqualified contractor propose the low bid and then not have the. Experience or skills to to complete the project, so when you have a unique project that requires. Certain types of skill set, this is, this is, this is another option for you, so.
And I think going out to bid would be good on this one, where we don't know how much of what we can complete with the funding that we have. Let's figure out what our shortfall is, so we know what we're raising toward.
If that's. That's the next step you want to proceed to, then.
And or if there's one that jumps out at you guys right now, then we can proceed with contract negotiation.
I also think a bid is always a good thing because it actually incentivizes them to get as much done with the budget you have versus if you just say, okay, well, we think we can get. Three quarters of a mile done, that's probably all they're gonna do.
You have time, timeframes to consider as well, so keep that in mind.
And have either one of them said that. Dollar wise, if they had the money, I guess that's not really the way to approach that, but. They can stay within that, complete the whole project. From Indian.
We we have not discussed prices at that level, no.
This doesn't have to be sent out or anything now, because we did the RFQ, now we can just ask them for bids and we can give them a pretty short. Timeline on that, right?
I don't know, I need to go back and review the statute.
How long did it take them to do that part?
I'd say roughly three months.
Six weeks.
Six weeks, I mean, time, time started, you know, they had other projects going forward and I think we were completed by. It was not, not far into September. So, six weeks total.
Got time to bid it then, and I think that's what we can move forward then, let's just get bids, let's figure out where our shortfall is. I would have them bid it for the mile and figure out where we're at and see how we can backfill if we can.
Sound good to you? What would be the next step then, you're gonna check on some?
Yeah, let me, let me review the statute, we'll come up with a bid process proposal and put a packet together and.
And how long do we want to keep that open for these guys to submit it?
I think it depends on what the statute says.
Otherwise, as short as possible would be great.
That's what I was, it's gonna take them some time, obviously, to put the numbers together.
Do you want my numbers that I kept, Dave?
Yeah, keep them for the record. Everybody, keep your notes, if you would.
I kept notes for that.
Oh, you did for? Okay, just make sure you get a copy of.
Do you want us to go ahead and vote on that and then state, you know, in our motion that we're moving forward with a request for? Do I have a motion?
Before with a bid to select a contractor for the Sampson Trail Pathway Phase Two.
So we moved in second at all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, and I was gonna say, I think we're open to suggestions if you want to improve that form rubric, if that's the direction we want to move forward on our Qs. For projects like this.
I think the process needs to be better, I think instead of doing it like this, I think, you know, we need to. Do a workshop or something, I mean, just just trying to look at all of them, we need to print them, we need to, you know, score it. A little bit differently, I think, or maybe it's just because it's new to us. Might be make it a little uncomfortable too, so.
Well, part of it for me is gives you an option to work with, instead of, you know, I've I've always. Oh, you gotta take a loss bid, that drives me crazy.
The the legislature created this option as an alternative to being. Stuck, if you will, with the with the low bid option, if you have a qualified contractor that that is awarded a contract because of the low bid. That's great, the process worked exactly how it is, but or was intended to, but if you have. A situation where you've got an underqualified contractor that submits a a a little bit. That can create some problems for you, so.
We are out of time, so we need to move into executive. Dave, do you want to take this and then just move on, so we can get our morning done, we've got quite the afternoon.
You fall asleep out there, Brian?
I am going to move that we go into executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B. Moved in seconded, roll call boot.